Well, it's seven o'clock and it looks like we are... Chairman is among the missing. So, we need a motion to appoint a temporary chairman for tonight.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Barker as our temporary chairman.
A second motion.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Couple of administrative items first, the minutes from our meeting on June 20th. Everybody should have received a copy tonight or an email. So, we need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20, 2019, as written. A second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The other administrative item is the sexual harassment training, which is required of all board members. And the deadline for completing it is October.
I don't know the exact date.
So, we really were up against the deadline. So, there will be a session next Thursday at six o'clock, an hour session. So, hopefully, everyone can make it so we can complete our training. First item tonight, for everybody, we are normally aboard at five. And you see, we only have four here. So, any matters would have to be approved by a affirmative vote of three out of the four people. So, if anybody wants to come back another time, you're welcome, or you can go forward with the four-person board. Our first item is Greg Chambray from 14 East Main Street. An application to, for a special permit use for modifying the structure to add a apartment on the second floor, 44 East Main Street, property's own, central business.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Greg Chambray, representing Prestige Services LLC, which is the owner of the structure. Just a little background about the place, it's situated right here around the corner between Smith Insurance and the Music Store. It's been there for some time. To my knowledge, 1976, it was built by, I believe, Dr. Gallo. He built it for his own use on the second floor. And then down below, a couple of administrative offices. I'm not sure who was in there originally. But, you know, over time, different businesses have been in that bottom part. So, some years later, Dr. Gallo retired and sold the... I don't know if he sold the practice, but he sold the use in the building. Dr. Enerline, who was also a dentist, he occupied that building for quite some time. And the, really, back in those days, if you will, the dental profession saw a lot of converted homes, as well as that was kind of cutting edge back then, being an office building. But as time went along, and Dr. Enerline even suggested to me that he was having problems with the stairs. You know, now you see dental offices where it's ground level and handicap access is certainly available. And so, you know, you see dentists really moving away from the converted houses and these kinds of things with limited, you know, access. So, I, quite honestly, have run into the same thing with this building. We've had chiropractor in there, we've had, you know, financial planners, those kinds of things. And when customers come and want to go up the six or seven stairs, you know, that are there, even if they get dropped off in front, there's six or seven stairs. If they have to go in the back down where the Village Bakery is and park back there, they don't even bother with that because there's more stairs, you know, to go along with that. So, finding that, you know, running that upper area is difficult, you know, because of the access. And we feel that it lends itself quite well to, you know, loft-style apartment. It would be a one-bedroom. You have, I believe, a print in your packet that shows what the layout might be. And it's consistent with the area. The music shop next door has, you know, second-floor living space. And you see across the street, there's living space on second floor. And I think generally, according to the village plan, that this type of use is consistent with what, you know, the village is looking for. And I think you see it in Fairport and other, you know, villages where there's residential living above and business use kind of below. And that will stay the way it is right now. The John Buchi from the Music Store, he rents one area in the back where he has inventory. And he does his repairs on the musical instruments. So, he's one of the tenants. And then in front, there's a financial planner who occupies that. And, you know, those folks will definitely stay. So, it's really consistent with what goes on because typically, somebody who rents will be gone during the day to work. So, the businesses, you know, won't conflict with that. And then when business gets over with, the person comes back and lives there and occupies the building. So, it's really a good, you know, kind of fit. My architect worked with Will for a number of months, satisfying the, you know, taking through the, what would you call it, the equivalency document to make sure that the fire safety...
Chapter 14 review.
Yeah, situation is in order for that type of occupancy. So, we have that covered in your packet. We've answered, you know, all the concerns that the village code brings up in terms of, you know, occupancy. So, I think we kind of covered our bases with that. There will be no change to the outside of the building whatsoever. So, what you see is kind of what you get with regard to that. So, that's kind of a little bit of the background and what we intend to do there. And we're hopeful that we can get permission tonight to go ahead.
Any questions from the board? So, I had a lot of gummies filled over the years. I don't recall, is there... The access from the back, not the street side?
Yes.
Does that go through the bottom floor, or does it come up into that, what will be an apartment?
No, it comes through the bottom floor, and then you have to go up two flights of steps then to get to the landing on the first. And then a second flight of steps to get to the, to the second floor there.
So, you're only going to have one, from what I see, it's only one bedroom?
One bedroom, right, yeah.
Is that apartment going to occupy the entire second floor? It looked to me like there might have been a space there that was not part of the apartment.
No, it will occupy the entire second floor, yeah.
How many square feet was it then?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,400. So, it's a good size. It's a real good-sized apartment. It's not, you know, it's not going to be terrible. I'd be scratching. So, it's good.
Any comments from the audience?
Rick Waller, 20 Elm Street. All I can say is, the only thing wrong with this building is it was built wrong back in '76. It should have matched the rest of the village, and it doesn't. The rest of the village has, a lot of it has second-floor apartments. Ed did the building that was there before this one. And so, I think it's a very permissible and good use for it. Thank you.
Do we need to do anything more for these? Ask and answer any other questions for the special use?
Well, it's...
I think we've covered them.
It's 17544 are the six, you know, factors you're supposed to look at to determine whether to grant the special permit or not. It's whether it's appropriate for the particular lot location, that unreasonable detrimental to neighboring properties, consistent with an orderly and appropriate development of neighboring properties, or joined by existing or permitting uses, a suitable transition between neighboring uses and districts, or in and the location upon the site is required in 17541. That's sort of the planning boards, things they look at. Then an appropriate evolution of the comprehensive plans of the village website. And I believe the comprehensive plan encourages residential uses along Main Street, particularly in the second floors of property.
Planning board, do they have any comments?
No.
Someone was...
They did give a positive recommendation. I don't, I didn't see, I don't know if their minutes are done yet or whatever, but...
Yeah, everybody can print them. Yeah, they made a positive recommendation.
Well, there are no more questions, I think, than the motion.
First, under secret, we have a type-two...
Somebody's going to have to do the secret motion.
Well, I make a motion that this is a type-two pursuant to seeker.
No, we don't.
And we're in the lead agency.
Lead agency. Do you have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now, we need a motion for the special use permit.
I make a motion to approve 14 East Main Street for a special use permit.
Second motion. Motion made, seconded, all in favor? I think you're all set.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you.
When is this going to be, should have asked this. When do you think it might be occupied?
Couple months. Let us see how it goes.
But you're almost ready to go over it?
Yeah, now that I got... As soon as I can get going. Yeah, yeah.
So soon.
Soon.
It was good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item is for Bill and Mary Beth Bechers, owners of 58 Kircher Park, for the proposal to erect a 360-square-foot shed in the back of the lot at the, at the Kircher Park.
Hello, I'm Mary Beth Bechers, and my husband Bill. I've been a Webster resident all my life. We've, I grew up on Southwood Drive. We live on Kircher Park. We've been there over 31 years. And we've accumulated a lot of stuff. And in our near future, we're going to need to replace our garage. And it's filled with gardening tools, snow blowers, snow tires, lawn mower, cultivator, a lot of stuff. And we don't have a shed, and we really think that it would be useful. So, we thought about it and decided we'd really like to have... We thought first about building it ourselves, and that takes time and patience. And then we thought about some of the things we might need in near future, well, or maybe not near, down the line like a riding lawnmower. And so, I went and visited the sturdy-built shed and this little, the little barn-like shed there at the top. That was really nice. And we thought it would look really nice in the back of our yard. Our lot is very deep, 233 feet deep. And so, I took a couple pictures and then printed them on my printer. So, it's not high-quality. But this is a picture from the back of the, you know, from my back door. And you see, it's a lawn lot. So, all the way in the back, well, not all the way, 10 or 12 feet forward from there. We'll probably go a little more than 10 feet, just because it's a little flatter we put it. And this would be the view from the front of the shed looking towards our house. So, we can still see that standing right where the door should be, looking towards the house. Still have a lot of room. And so, we hope to put it right back there, you know, in front of the lot. And we thought it would look really nice back there. And instead of just having it be wood, we thought we would get the vinyl siding version of it so it would match our house, which is what vinyl siding. We just had a new green roof put on it, so we'll pick up the green roof with some little black shutters like we have on our house. And, yeah, and we'll have a single door in the center facing the house with little windows on the sides, just like that picture. But on the side of it, a double door so you can drive a riding lawnmower into it to park it. And also, I would like to buy a kayak to keep in there because I kayak on Wednesday nights. And so, if I buy a 14-foot kayak, it needs to be a 16-foot shed.
Justice lines is open for that large screen TV in the cooler, right? I don't know.
But we're not planning to put any water or electricity.
Whatever she wants.
Storage.
Storage, yeah. So, storage for the gorilla in the winter and lawnmowers, snow blowers in the summer. A little white gardening bench with pots and, you know, stuff so you can... There's looking at me a little south window in case I want to start seeds for my garden.
Where's this going to be in relation to your, your garden that's back there now?
The garden is actually quite a ways back in the yard. So, it'll be closer to the garden than the garage is to the garden. So, instead of me having to, you know, hike all the way back up to the garage to get tools, it'll be right there close.
The garden needs a little kind of loving care.
Yes, it does.
Is it, do you intend to really use it as a garden, or...
Well, actually, I have. You are seeing this one over here, which is overgrown right now. But right here, we have a grape arbor. And on the other side of that, I have a...
Is the grape arbor yours?
Yeah. Yeah, we have grape arbor. And on the other side, if you walk under the arbor, we have a fenced garden with raised beds that we've been working on, and that's pretty much under control now. We need to tidy that one up because the mint has gotten out of control.
Can you really...
It's more of like an herbal garden over there, and there's berries and, yes, we need some attention.
Any other questions from the board? Are you going to remove anything back there, or just it's going to be just a brand-new?
Brand-new shed? They're...
You're not going to, you're not going to remove anything?
There's a man who will come in and put a stone bed there to set the shed on. But no, we're not going to remove anything.
And I see you have contacted several of your neighbors?
Yes, yes, all around, two on each side and five on the other side. And they were all positive.
Did anybody object or say...
No, not at all. So, actually, my neighbors on both sides have garden sheds.
Are we out of, are we out of science?
I knew you were going to ask.
I didn't notice. I was looking for it.
Yeah, I know. And I actually was going to put it out today just to bust your chops, but I didn't put it out. So, you got all the signatures.
You didn't put it out today?
No. I was going to...
Yeah, all good intentions. Any other, any questions, other questions from the board?
And also...
Any comments from the audience? At this point, I believe we need a motion.
So, we're approving the 60 square feet?
Additional 60 square feet.
Yes, that's right.
So, you have 60 square foot, third, and second.
First, you need the secret motion, the granting of area variances, single family or type-two action. So, I will make a motion to declare this only board appeals, this lead agency in this matter for type-two action under secret. A second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion for the possible variance of...
So, the variances would be a, it would be a 60-square area.
60 square feet.
Because 100 feet is allowed, we're asking for 100. So, I'll make a motion that the set applicants seeking a 60-square-foot variance pursuant to vote showing section 175-76D area that be moved to a vote.
A second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
We're good?
Yeah. Okay, you said it.
Okay.
Get your shed permit.
Now we get the permit?
Okay. Thank you.
Next, before we close up, a next one.
Two things. Yes, we have one coming in, so we've got to remember.
There will, there will be a meeting then, yeah. There will be a meeting then.
Yeah. And second of all, I know we've been talking about it for a while. Think maybe we can discuss what would be a reasonable size for a shed rather than 100 square feet because we get so many variances coming in for sheds. I know we've been talking about it for a while, but...
Wouldn't somebody check with other groups?
What other groups?
Other agencies, Steven?
Town hundreds, 213.
The question that I had every once in a while, not to delay this conversation, but the conversation I had is that our rules and regulations allow for two buildings on the lot.
Garage and shed.
Garage and shed. And sort of the, the thing that I look at is that, so our garages can be very large in the village, very tall, because they're old barns.
Well, 18, 18 feet might be 150 square feet.
So, the point is is that one thing I think should be taken into consideration in this is how big the lot is, whether it's size the shed, which is the reason I think we have 100 square feet. These folks, in reality, I was over it, you have a very, very deep backyard. And so, that, that to me is a mitigation to me. What I have a hard time is when you start getting just stuff, lots of stuff. I'm kind of a minimalist. Let's say, keep throwing stuff out of the curb. So, my point is is that, and I know that that is my feeling, my opinion.
Sure.
But my thing is that generally, to look at the whole thing in that perspective, I think that's taken into consideration.
That, okay.
And I mean, we do that in consideration here because there are some lots of these buildings that are very small. And to put another structure on there appeals, appears to be taking up a lot of room. You know, that's my feeling.
I think the village is growing. It's had a lot of younger families, kids, toys, things, you know, sports, equipment. So, you know, I go back and forth on this. I understand your point of view. But like I said, we've just gotten, and a lot of them, you know, have been families with kids and stuff. So, and I should go back and look at the last two or three years, how many variances we've granted for sheds.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I think we need to come up with a percentage based on the lot size. So, if you have...
That's engineer talk.
Well, hey. The math doesn't lie, right? So, then you can base your variance off of, if you want, a larger shed than, you know, you got a...
Why do you think you do math, though? I mean, you don't want to do...
But then...
Those make sense, though.
But then, but then if somebody comes in and has an acre lot or whatever, and...
Yeah, that's my perspective, I think.
Yeah, it gives the...
Stayed in 79.
They have calculators, Will.
Yes, I know. I agree with you, yes. Yeah, it gets to be clever.
We have a math teacher right here.
The largest flats would be...
Please help me calculate my shed size.
Will?
Yes, sir.
What's, what would be, what would be the largest flats that we would have in the village?
They're all over places, all over the... Because like Tobin's old place there, that's huge on South Avenue. Was it 240 South Avenue, the one with the big sycamore tree in the front there? That lot's enormous. So, but the average, say, average width, 70 feet, over 200 feet in length. That's kind of some of the bigger lots.
But I think it's more reasonable to do it based on the lot size than a percentage.
Okay. Write it up. Yeah, if you could, if you could come up with...
I'll just take the zoning out of the town of Petfield because that's how we do it in the town of Petfield.
All right.
Let's go start. Great, we can start from there. All right, bring that zone in.
No, that's fine. Yeah, if you can make a copy of what they have for sheds and bring it in like to the next meeting or something, and we can take a look at it. Because it does make sense. And then we could propose that to the village board, and we'd have to amend the zoning code. It's amending a local law, so you go through the whole public hearing process and all that.
Right.
The problem with constantly granting variances, it's after a while, since you've granted so many variances, legally, it's hard to say no.
Right.
Because you've set this precedent with basically, you keep granting all these variances. So, how can you say no to the net, to somebody?
Right. And in the state, I think, up to 144 square feet doesn't require a permit. We're just more restricted than the state standards.
Which is fine in the grand scheme of things. If you have small cookie-cutter lots, maybe 144 square feet too, maybe. lots, maybe a hundred and forty-four square feet too, if you have a garage and the house. I mean, I can understand both sides of it, but, you know, I know there's a lot at the end of my street that's five acres, I'm going to give them a hundred square foot shed.
I can see requiring the permit, no matter what the size of the shed is, so you make sure it meets the setback requirements, otherwise you'll get people buying sheds and sticking them right on the lot lines and stuff, and you don't want that.
No.
So, you know, getting the permit isn't the issue, it's just, it's just requiring the variance of attendance.
So if somebody wanted to put a hundred-square-foot shed in the backyard, they would still require a permit?
At least they would come and get a permit.
Yeah. We're more straight there.
Technically, if you wanted a seventy-five-square-foot shed, you got to get a permit.
Okay. More done for now, so...
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made, made and seconded, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done.
Thank you.
Now what am I doing? This show.
Raise it.
Raise it.
I'm going to put the gun back on the board.